This will be a special city council meeting regarding a proposed ordinance for waiving the requirements of the competitive bidding for the cost for the purchase, man, I can't read today, an ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding for the purpose of changing healthcare providers. Need a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Should we have a roll call or something?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, let's go ahead and do the roll call.
Ms. Zeller?
Here.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Perkey Pyle?
Here.
We have four.
Okay, we have four.
Yeah, the good ones are here.
Okay. Somebody want to kick it off? Lonnie, you want to take the floor?
Well, ever since I've been here for the last year and a half, there's always been some health insurance questions because we've been insured with the municipal league and been part of their self-insured program, but of course, we're just a little tiny element in a huge pool. And so, there's been a lot of questions and comments over the period of time, and couldn't we do better maybe with private insurance? And so, in looking at all the healthcare reform and everything, I thought that very well, we possibly could, but there are some things that we have to do to kind of take steps to do some of these things. And so, I contacted about four different agencies to come in and give us some quotes and look at our situation and make some recommendations. Two of the agencies, because of the uncertainty of healthcare reform, chose not to participate. They did talk with me, but they chose not to participate. Brown Hiller Clark, who I'm familiar with for many years because of when I lived in Fort Smith, that's where they're headquartered, although they have changed tremendously since that period of time and added products and ownership has changed, I believe, some. And, but they came in and they did a study of what we have currently, and of course, we have to remember that there's only about three, I believe, is that correct, Scott? Insurance companies that are licensed to sell health insurance in the state of Arkansas, and that's Arkansas Blue Cross Blue Shield, Qual Choice, and United Healthcare?
There's a couple more, but three competitive, the ones that are actually competitive with the business, the ones that aren't.
Okay. But at any rate, so regardless whether it's Brown Hiller Clark or whether it's somebody else, these are the actual companies that they have a choice to deal with. So Scott, actually Joe Morgan out of Little Rock with Brown Hiller Clark, they have an office there now contacting me. And so, we talked and then Scott came on, and they've done a lot of work and a lot of research, and they put together a proposal here. And this is Scott Taylor, his office is in Lowell, so he's right here, close to us and everything, and I'm going to let him come up here and tell you about the proposals that we have and where we're looking at possibly going ultimately in the future. Yes?
Lonnie, let me get this straight.
Mr. Mitchell.
There are only three major players in the state?
Yes.
Correct? And that's Arkansas, Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Healthcare, and?
Qual Choice.
Qual Choice. And we're currently, and that doesn't include municipal league?
Well, municipal league is, that, those are the primary insurance companies. That doesn't include the self-insured companies and the mutual companies where, like the municipal league is essentially a mutual company wherever, you know, it's a pool of, they don't take anybody outside if you're not associated with a municipal government, you know, or municipal.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so those are the major players, yes. And I'm sure that there are some other questions that you'll have, but Scott and I will speak here too. Scott Taylor with Brown Hiller Clark.
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for having this, having this special meeting for us to go over these initiatives. When we were contacted, or when we contacted the city, we went out to market, and we're the independent insurance agents, so I go out to all the companies that we represent, and we, we share the demographics of your current program, and then we market that to who wants to be competitive on the insurance programs for the city. And so, what I've shared in front of you guys are the final numbers that we got back that I think is, would be the proposal that I would, I believe is going to be good for the city. United Healthcare being the one for the medical insurance, MetLife for the dental, and Superior Vision for vision. Currently municipal league has all the products bundled together. They have the medical, dental, and vision, all in one product. And so, that's separate than going out to the individual carriers in the market.
Can you briefly kind of explain the differences? And, I mean, are we improving the, reducing cost, one, and then are we improving the coverage?
We are improving coverage. We're improving networks, but the cost is increasing by $32.85 per employee per month. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, that, the $32.85 is to the city, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Looking at deductible, it looks like the individual deductible will be almost $500 less though, for the individual?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the family as well. It's going to be less. And the networks are greater than what we currently have with municipal league. Yes, sir.
Is this an HMO preferred provider?
It's a PPO.
It's going to be a PPO?
Yes, sir.
So they'll be able to keep their same physicians, nothing's going to change?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, I see the office visit goes up five bucks, specialist goes from 20 to 50, so that's an increase. ER visit goes down from 250 to 125. I'm sorry, I'm just going to go ahead and step through it. Let's see, prescription drugs, tier two increases five bucks, tier three increases $10. And then, I don't guess we have a comparison, do we have a comparison, municipal league on everything else here?
The dental and vision on the municipal league, since it was a bundled product, they put more emphasis on the medical portion and not as much emphasis on the dental and vision. And so, that's why I didn't compare the two, the dental and vision product. The dental product, the out-of-pocket was 1,200, and so I matched that to, I'm sorry, not the out-of-pocket, the amount the plan will pay per year was 1,200, the annual max with the plan, and so I matched that. The deductible was $50, so I matched that as well. On the vision product, it was just a reimbursement plan with the municipal league with a $50 deductible, and so I went with a full vision PPO product. And so, that's going to be a much better vision plan than what you currently have. And so, the deductible on the current vision product was $50. We just went with regular copays, and so now you got a copay instead of a deductible for the vision.
Do you want to get into the two-tier and the four-tier on the?
Yes, sir. One of the other differences is on the price structure. The municipal league has a two-tier structure, so you can either do employee or family. And a family consists of either spouse, children, or spouse and children. With United Healthcare, we have a four-tier rate. And so, for instance, the employee would have that rate. If an employee wanted to add a spouse, they would have a separate rate, employee, children a separate, and employee, full family is another rate on the, yes, sir?
Eureka Springs has a domestic partnership, does that, does the health insurance include domestic partners?
The plan that we chose did not.
So you're not going to be able to provide insurance for any of the employees of the city that have a domestic partnership?
The way it's structured currently, correct.
What would it take to do that?
Just an amendment.
An amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Would it increase the?
I'm sorry?
An amendment on your part or our part?
On the insurance company's part, on United Healthcare.
Okay. And do they do that?
United Healthcare does.
So we, but we haven't asked for that, or you had, you didn't ask for that?
Not at this time, no.
Would that just fall into this category, these, one of these four tiers?
It would.
Okay.
Yes.
So it would be employee and family, or employee, spouse, whatever?
Spouse is what they would call it, yeah.
Okay. Would it increase that cost?
I can't answer that without actually going through underwriting and ask.
Yeah.
So, there's a possibility it would, I just, we just don't know that.
Well, can we, can it be changed at a later date if we, you know, if we sign off on this now? I assume, Mr. Mayor, that's why we're here, is to approve this.
To go through it and see if you want to approve it.
Okay.
Yes, to answer your question, it could be changed at a later date. Yes, sir.
Would you be kind enough, excuse me, to explain the difference between in-network and out-of-network for everyone and what's your, the area of in-network covers?
Yes, sir. In-network versus out-of-network is the contracted networks of the insurance company itself. So, United Healthcare goes out to the providers and actually contracts with them to see if they want to be in-network provider. In our area, all the major facilities are covered as in-network, and majority of the doctors in our area are covered in network. The out-of-network providers would be somebody that just did not want to go into contract with United Healthcare. And so, they give you the two options, being that it is a preferred PPO, they give you the option to go wherever you want, and so it's going to be the employee's choice on whether they want to choose to go to in-network provider or an out-of-network provider.
In-network, inclusive of pretty much all of Arkansas?
They have a national network.
They have a national in-network?
Correct.
So, I mean, it could be Kansas City, Tulsa?
Correct.
New York City, whatever, Mayo could be?
Correct. And that's why originally, when I said it, we bettered our network than municipal league, being that we have a PPO and choosing United Healthcare, we can, we can use their network around the nation, if so, if so they choose. Yes, sir?
I, probably a question for Lonnie. Lonnie, for something as important as health insurance for the city, why are we doing this as waiving the requirements for competitive bidding? What is the, what happened that created this urgency that the council has to move in this manner on such a big benefit and topic?
Well, I, of course, have been working on this for a very long time, and we've come down to a point here of, there's only the, about three different agencies that I talked to. Two of them did not want to work on it at all because they're unsure about what's going to happen with healthcare reform that's going to come into effect in 2014. This is another reason that we're working on things right now, is to kind of get ahead of the ball, so to speak, for what may occur in 2014. The other thing is that all of this didn't kind of come together until just here very shortly, and as was explained earlier, in Arkansas, we only have three major licensed providers of health insurance. So, it doesn't matter if it's this agency or if it's some other agency, they're going to be dealing with essentially the same companies with the same rate structure and so forth. Now, in addition to that, the rates that United Healthcare has quoted are predicated on a June 1 enrollment period date. So, we, to get these rates that they have quoted, we are needing to take action.
So, when does our, when does our policy end June 1?
Well, May 31st.
May 31st. So that's, so that's the issue, okay.
And that's why we're called this, why we asked for this meeting to be called, because we need some lead time and everything. It's not trying to, but, and the competitive bidding, to answer that part, you know, it, like I said before, whether we're dealing with Brown Hiller Clark or we're dealing with some other agency, they're basically dealing with the same healthcare providers.
Follow-up question, or not statement, then a follow-up question. I have United Health, or I have United Healthcare starting in July 1. I have a strong, a long background with United Healthcare and obviously my former positions.
Sure.
And have found that United Healthcare as a company was exceptional in payments and everything that they do. They're very easy, easy to work with. Some people have a problem with in and out of network and, because it causes a little bit of restriction, but in all honesty, in today's healthcare environment, when you have a company that steps up and pays and all that it does, it's very important. And United Healthcare has, in my opinion, an exceptional, exceptional business ethic and background. So there's no problem there. So, budget-wise, are you, are you, are we prepared to cover this extra cost?
We are. We are. And, and I might, I might say a couple of things to follow up, if I might, Mr. Mayor, what you touched on with United Healthcare. If, for instance, if you've met 50%, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Scott, but as I understand it, if you've met 50% of your deductible with the municipal league at the $2,000, well then, that flows over, and you don't have to start your deductible from, from zero again.
What, what we have done for the city with going to United Healthcare is we actually did what they call deductible credit. Being that we have a 6-1 effective date, in the past six months, from January 1 to June 1, if any of your employees reach their deductible or any portion of that, that will actually get credited for going forward for the rest of the six months of the year with United Healthcare.
So, at any rate, that's just something that I think is really important, to keep people from having to start it.
That's a big benefit.
Nikki, did you that want to ask?
Yeah, it's for you. At this point, have we had any of the partnerships sign up for additional insurance since we approved it?
I'm sorry?
Do we have any domestic partnerships that have signed up for insurance since we approved it a few years ago?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And that's one reason Scott asked me that question, and I said, for now, not having knowledge of any that have signed up or requested, that we went without the domestic partnership.
Right, okay. We do have the option, should it?
We do have the option.
Request, okay, that's nice.
With United Healthcare.
Yes, with United.
Whether or not, and the reason, one reason, if I might back up, see, Scott has sifted through all these companies and everything, and we came down to United Healthcare because Blue Cross Blue Shield, first of all, they wouldn't even give us a quote if we included domestic partnership, okay? They would not quote on it, am I right?
Correct.
And then, secondly, they were much higher even without the domestic partnership than Qual Choice and United Healthcare. And so, we're down to United Healthcare, as being, in his opinion and in my opinion, the best of the lot.
After dealing with Blue Cross Blue Shield for over 30 years and fighting them, trying to get contracts, trust me, I'm not a fan of theirs.
I understand.
I'm interested in knowing what happens when there is a situation where there's an ongoing set of procedures that began earlier in the year and will extend into the rest of the year?
They'll continue. Are you, can you be more informative with your, is it on the pre-ex, pre-existing?
Well?
Or are you talking about like a step theory procedure, or?
Okay, I'll use myself as an example. I had an accident on Christmas Eve, and so putting everything back together began then and will extend well into the rest of this year. So if we switch on June 1?
Basically, you would just have to give your proprietor your new insurance card, and then United Healthcare would pick up where municipal league left off. So there would be no gap, no lapse in care provided?
What about deductible?
The deductible that you've met prior to 6-1 will get credited?
Who knows with the other company?
Correct.
So she doesn't have to start over with deductible?
Deductible, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so that leads me to another question. When I would call municipal and ask questions, I really left each time with the impression that I was talking to a machine, and there was zero human response or room for working things out, so to speak.
Correct.
So one of the things I'm interested in is finding out if we do switch to working with you folks, are we going to be able to engage in real conversation and problem solving? Or is it just like?
One of the, one of the services that Brown Hiller Clark and I, I give to you is, I'm a consultant for the city, so basically, when you choose to use an insurance broker, an independent insurance broker, you're choosing to have me as your consultant. And so, I am the bridge between the gap of the insurance company and you, the individual. And so, if you feel the need that you're not getting anywhere with the insurance company, you can use me to be that bridge and have those languageings and conversations and so forth to resolve the issue. So, yes, ma'am?
Well, definitely it's more appealing.
Just, Joe Morgan, who's out of their Little Rock office, is not here because he's sunning on the beach down in Florida, but nevertheless, they both, and I understand this is a policy throughout their organization, and I'm not surprised, having been familiar with them many years ago, back in the 70s when I lived in Fort Smith, they have their cell phone numbers on their cards. And you call that cell phone number, and if Scott's busy, you leave him a message, and I'll guarantee you that he will call you in a matter of minutes as soon as he gets an opportunity. I've had excellent response, and this is a question that I asked them, is if we have a problem with a claim, if any one of our employees has a problem with a claim, do we call you? And that's been the standard answer, is like you got, we run interference for you.
Okay, the, so everyone is aware too and knows that the current employee charge is $335.50, and that is totally paid by the city, or is that, is that, that's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, there is no participation with employee?
Not with employee.
Okay. And so, that is going to go to the $368.35 under this new plan. If, if they choose a family plan, and I assume that's for two spouses and unlimited children?
Correct.
That'll be $963.96. That would be a participation?
Well, that'll be totally the cost, that'll be totally the cost of the employee, because the city does not participate in the spouse or the family.
Okay, so that would be, that would be an additional rate, it's not less that, it's?
It's less the employee part, so that, that nine?
$63.96.
That one, that's the total amount, and so?
You would deduct the employee amount off of that.
Correct.
Same with an employee and spouse, okay.
Correct.
And let's just take about the two-tier and the four-tier, and I know I'm taking up time, but I think this is an important issue that we all are comfortable with. Like Dawn, for instance, has her husband covered, and she's paying the same rate for her husband as if it was her husband and they had six children. And so, that's where the different tiers come in. She would be paying, or anybody for that matter, if they were paying just for the spouse, it would be one rate, but then if they were paying for spouse and, I don't know, children?
$748 regardless.
It would be a different rate. So, at any rate, that's where the two-tier, four-tier differential comes in.
These, the dental and the vision, then, are they optional on the part of the employee? They're not included in this rate from United Healthcare?
They're not included in the rate, but they're included in the total, the total cost that we figure down there.
The $368?
That's correct. They are included there.
Okay.
Lonnie, is that additional $32.85, is that going to, are city employees going to have to pay that?
No, city's going to pay it.
City's going to pick up all this increase in costs?
That's correct. And, and on this, and, and we can do it. I mean, we're okay with doing it. The total number for the rest of the year in this resolution that you have is about $12,500.
So, you want us to pass this today instead of waiting to our meeting on May 29 at 11th hour? What would you want us to do, Lonnie? You better tell us quick.
I, I would like for you to, if you feel, if you feel that this is good for the city of Eureka Springs and its employees and their families. Now, let me tell you one thing, that I'm not doing this for me, because I'm not on the city's health insurance program. I have my own, I have that.
Through your association, yeah.
So, what we're doing here is hopefully beneficial to the city and its employees.
So you say that we can clear you from any conflict of interest?
Absolutely. Thank you.
You know, you can have a seat at the table.
Sorry?
You can have a seat at the table. We clarified that before.
And I appreciate it, but I, I thought I'd just be here for a second.
I was hoping, me too.
So, I, did I understand you to say that the employees don't pay half of their insurance?
The employees do not. The elected officials do. That's been the policy of the city for as long as I'm in the government. That's the way it's been handled.
You mean, I'm not going to get 45 cents deposited into my bank account every two weeks?
No.
Anymore? Darn.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Oh, I'm not, so, I'm not too sure how to make this motion. Are we ready for it? Are we ready for it?
I hope.
If there's any more discussion, I'm wishing, we can listen to it.
We'll try to make a motion out of this, because my flashcard is missing over here, so I don't know what I'm gonna do now. I'd like to make a motion that we assign the ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding for the purpose of changing healthcare providers a number. Somebody's gonna, here's my flashcard to help.
Spend the rules.
To spend the rules.
Assign a number for the first reading?
And do the first reading. Thank you.
Okay.
I got it, well, you got it for me, thank you.
Close enough.
And I second that.
I always get the words mixed up.
I don't remember that stuff, I'm sorry.
We're gonna do a real call vote.
What, does this have to be done by ordinance?
It does have to be.
Yeah, because it's changing the budget.
To be the way.
We could add an emergency clause, so it does go into effect immediately. If we add an emergency clause, then it does go into effect immediately.
Well, the money part would be?
So if we do it three, if we do three readings today, it still requires the 30 days?
That's right.
Am I understanding correctly?
That's correct.
Because there's no emergency clause?
And that, that doesn't get you in there by the first of June?
Are you?
Not really.
I wouldn't think so.
Are you sure this isn't for the health and safety? Because if we don't have insurance, it'll be pretty unhealthy.
Well, yeah. Okay, so the question to you is, if we approve it today, but it still takes by law 30 days, are we still locked into these prices?
If you approve it today, we'll?
It will take 30 days to become law.
Okay.
Are we locked into these prices still?
Only if we are able to have the first month's premium paid by the first of the month.
Let's insert an emergency clause.
Well, just wait a minute, just wait a minute. Okay, can we make the premium by the first? Are you prepared for that?
We can make the price.
Because if you can't, then the extra prices that would go up, would declare this an emergency to lock in these prices, so it doesn't hurt the welfare of the citizenry.
I agree with Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Perkypile that we probably ought to insert an emergency clause and be done with it. Yvonne, can you, and we'll deal with the resolution and?
Otherwise, you'll have a lapse in coverage.
Right.
And emergency clause is no big issue. A matter of printing it on there and reading it in the record.
Now you've clarified legal grounds of.
Thank you.
Thank Madam Clerk for bringing that up, that's a good save. What is the wording for the emergency clause portion?
It's gonna go, it's going to be added, pull another?
We'll just pull another ordinance out.
Ordinance to find out what the?
It'll be this, but with an emergency clause added to it, that's all.
Well, we have to read, can we go ahead and go?
Can we go on the resolution then?
In my shop.
We can't do the resolution until we do the?
What it will essentially say?
Right, but you have already been on this.
What it will essentially say is, for the health, welfare, and benefit of the citizens of Eureka Springs and so forth, this will go into effect immediately upon passage. I mean, that's essentially.
Wait till it's?
I thought it said this, so let it be written, so let it be done.
Well, it sounds, you're so far behind.
That's perfect.
Yeah, it's just a matter of getting another ordinance printed out with the emergency clause on it.
So can we go ahead and start doing our readings? Because you learned?
Let's get the correct document.
Mickey, if you need to go, we still have a quorum with four.
You just, we just make sure that what we read is what is gonna be written into the record and will be law from this point on. So if we do this one without an emergency clause, it's invalid.
Have you got the motion made? Yes, I did. And we had a second, so we're at that, we're just sitting here waiting to read it. Gotta read a new one, so.
Well, thank you for coming.
And apologize for being late.
We'll take care of it with the quorum with the four that we have left.
Glad you made it. I propose.
If we need to, we'll call you on the phone, we can do it via phone.
Okay, so go ahead and take a vote on the first reading. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Okay, so that is 4-0. Well?
Hi, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody take this in and discard it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The resolution that's also before us, what do we do with this, and when do we read it?
We wait until we've passed the ordinance, because the resolution's not in effect until?
Very good. I agree.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate if we had some questions or discuss this while we're waiting?
I think at this point, we could probably go ahead and discuss it, since we're waiting on the actual article to come back.
I don't think we have to, I don't think we have to add that to it until the third reading anyway. We can go ahead and pass the first two readings.
Oh, that's true, we can make changes up until the third one, can't we, ma'am?
It'll be just two, she'll print it on there then.
You think you read it just on the third one, is all? Actually, I think you actually do that after you read the third time, and then do the emergency clause.
I believe that is correct.
Well, the question I would, I would say is, if it was FOI, do you have to produce this document? Because this is, I don't, that's what I'm saying, but this is not the document you're gonna vote on.
It is.
Well, because this doesn't have the emergency clause on it.
You don't read, you don't read the emergency clause till the last reading?
If it's FOI, and you do the first reading, this is when you have to produce.
We're just talking about a few minutes.
Your counsel over there is shaking your head no, so.
No.
So.
Okay, well, it's just a few minutes before she comes back with the original document. That way, no questions asked, we're not in any kind of jacked up trouble.
Yeah, I've already been sued twice.
But you can go ahead and ask questions about the resolution without again.
Why don't we discuss, I move that we discuss the revolution? Revolution? The resolution?
Now, before you can add a number to it?
That's a Freudian slip. Just discuss.
Okay, you can add a number for discussion on them.
We can just discuss it. What's the discuss? We all agree.
This is just the resolution that allows him to adopt the budget.
These are, these are the, these are the charges for the rest of the year.
For the different departments, with the except, with one exception, and that's transit. And the state of Arkansas amends transit's budgets, so we left transit off for the state to take care of.
But the transit employees fall under the same?
They fall under the same, yes, they do.
Lonnie, just put that to your shirt. Oh, you won't have to.
Could we get a second on discussing the resolution, please?
A second.
Call in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Obviously, you can tell, we're not gonna be a problem with passing this stuff here.
No, we just, we just gotta be careful where our Ps and Qs are lined up.
Do it correctly, and just gotta wait a few minutes.
Yes, just.
I think it's important.
Down the road, it makes it easier.
Having any break in coverage, I mean, might be an issue later on, but I don't think it would be an issue with our new, with UHC, but we just wanna be sure it's not an issue.
The fact that they're picking up the deductibles, moving the employees over seamlessly, there'll probably be some, some literature that will come out for the employees on the United Healthcare, and you'll probably hold some benefit meetings and something to explain it to all the people that are on the plan, I'm sure. Okay.
That was, one of the reasons that we called a special session, is so we had adequate amount of time to, one, explain to all the employees what the benefit coverage changed to, two, to make sure they have my contact info and all of our assistance, just in case, you know, any claims, issues arise. And then, that was, that was the whole point, to try to get this in and done before it goes into effect.
More than likely, 99.9% of what any of the employees are having done now, whether it's just a standard doctor visit or special care is going through one of the in-network providers, more than likely.
More than likely, I would, I would agree. There's, step therapy is the only instance that they would have to prove that they've went through the steps already to be on certain medications, but that, that's just a doctor's note or review of medical records. But that's, that's standard when you're switching carriers, that's typical, whenever you make a switch like that.
What's step therapy?
Step therapy is when, when somebody is on a medication, say, say for instance, the most common is a blood pressure medicine, you take blood pressure medicine and a water pill. To get them combined, you actually have to go through and make sure that the medications are comfortable with your body and so forth, and they step you up to the one pill instead of two pills.
It also be said to occur with cymstatins, too, with, with heart medication.
Correct.
As they adjust, yeah.
Correct.
I switched to United and found out that Washington Regional wasn't part of it, so I'm gonna have to go over to the Springdale Hospital, which I thought was interesting because, but I think that was the one, the plan I'm on, but it wasn't per se United. I don't think it's all United, I would be surprised.
United has?
United Medicare Advantage is what I got.
That's, that's a different platform. United has a huge conglomerate, they're the largest insurance company in the, in the United States, and so they have different platforms.
Yes, I think they're, they'll probably be fine, the employees will be.
Correct, yeah, Washington Regional is in-network, we chose the legacy platform, which encompasses more of the doctors and hospitals as, as a part for the employees.
Does Brown Hiller and Clark hand out complimentary medical marijuana samples or anything like that?
No.
You just did that on.
You lost that?
I was just curious, so I just.
For, for the record, no.
For the record, thank you, sir. Thank you for, for.
They're fine, yeah.
Now, you know that soundbite's gonna be everywhere, Terry.
Good.
So we're ready to vote on it now?
Since we've, we've got them right here. We can revert back to the emergency clause.
Happy with that, Mr. Weaver?
So, Madam Clerk, it doesn't change our motion at all, does it, that we added the resolution? We're fine.
Sir? The ordinance number will be 2182. An ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding for the purpose of changing healthcare providers, whereas the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, city, is desiring to change healthcare providers and, whereas the city's director of finance, Lonnie Clark, has contacted several insurance agencies to determine the one best desirable for the city's employee health insurance needs and, whereas the city believes that to advertise for bids on an insurance agency would not prove feasible or practical due to the unique nature of such insurance and the scarcity of suppliers in the state of Arkansas in the United States, and that it is beneficial to the city to allow the finance director to use his professional expertise and opinion to choose the insurance agency which would best serve the interests of the city. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, one, that pursuant to the provisions of section 3.04.02 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code, the council of said city finds that this being an exceptional situation in which the procedure for competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, does therefore waive the requirements of the competitive bidding so as to allow the director of finance to enter into, enter in to an agreement with, for healthcare insurance with Brown Hiller Clark and Associates. Two, that all ordinances or resolutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Three, that each of the provisions of this ordinance are severable, and the decision of any court having jurisdiction as to the validity of any provision shall not affect the remaining provisions.
I move to approve ordinance number 2182 on its first reading. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have a question. When do we read this emergency clause?
The variant.
Variant, the third reading?
We're gonna do this three times.
Okay. I move to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2182 by title only for second.
Second. Major senk. And we will, real call.
Yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
4-0. Ordinance number 2182, an ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding for the purpose of changing healthcare providers.
Motion to approve ordinance number 2182 on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I move to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2182 on its third and final reading by title only. Or do we read it the entire?
No, title only.
Second.
It was the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, he suspended rules, so we're gonna pull out the real call vote again. I try and remember that every time.
You got to look good.
It's getting better, and of course.
Ms. Zeller?
Aye.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
4-0. Ordinance number 2182, an ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding for the purpose of changing healthcare providers.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2182 on its third and final reading, and add to that the emergency clause, should be done right now.
Second.
No, Diane's shaking her head no, so let's just.
We gotta read it the third time, and then.
And then add it.
Yeah, approve it for the third time, and then do the emergency clause.
Correct.
Yes.
I second it.
Correct.
So, no suspension on the rules, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, because it is the third reading, it is, it is real call. Sorry.
So convoluted.
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
4-0.
I make a motion that we attach to ordinance 2182, the emergency clause, so it can be put into effect immediately.
Second.
To read the emergency clause?
To read the emergency clause, and yeah, add it, read it.
Major senk it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Emergency clause, the city council and finance director of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, find that because of the need for immediate purchase of employee health insurance, that it is in the best interest and for the health and safety of the citizens of Eureka Springs, that an emergency exists, and therefore, this ordinance shall go into full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Do we need to move to approve the emergency clause?
That's a part of the package.
Yeah, that is part of it.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, that one's done. Now we revert to the resolution. Need a motion to assign a number and?
I move to assign a number to the resolution and read it. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I don't think we'd use your calls on resolutions.
On resolutions?
I don't think so. Looking forward to it.
If you want.
Go ahead.
Do you want to just be safe?
Yeah, shoot, shoot, yeah, I don't care. As long as we get it done, it's just a matter of asking.
Resolution 6, oh, okay, well, let's do this first then.
Yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
4-0. Resolution 619, a resolution amending the adopted 2013 budget for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has determined that the 2013 fiscal budget should be amended. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, that the city is changing healthcare providers, section two, the amounts for this adjustment are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purposes set forth, calendar year ending December 31, 2013. The amendments are as follows. General fund expenses, line 01, 10, 50, 20, employee health insurance increase, $1,150. Line 01, 11, 50, 20, employee health insurance increase, $690. Line 01, 12, 50, 20, employee health insurance increase, $3,757. Line 01, 13, 50, 20, employee health insurance increase, $460. Line 01, 14, 50, 20, employee health insurance increase, $3,067. Line 01, 15, 50, 20, employee health insurance increase, $230. Street fund expenses, line 10, 00, 50, 20, employee health insurance increase, $1,290. Water and sewer expenses, line 80, 21, 50, 20, employee health insurance increase, $731. Line 80, 22, 50, 20, employee health insurance increase, $1,186.
I believe that covers it. Thank you very much. Is there any other business you need to take care of, Lonny? Okay, just a question, Mr. Mitchell.
Next year, Lonny, before the benefit period comes, would it be possible for, to, to get on the agenda for you remind us, so that we can have a discussion about the benefit package and employee contributions and everything as part of, maybe we'd even have to do it as part of the budget, instead of just assuming that every year that we'll be able to provide medical coverage, dental, and vision with the changes in healthcare and things going on, and benefit costs being what they are. This is pretty good percent of, this is a pretty good cost here, and I would hate to think that we don't give it some more analysis for the, for the future, to see where we're going to be.
I think that's a good suggestion, and I think it's a good idea that the council can be involved in that and discuss it and...
Proactively in advance. Thank you.
Any other council comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
We should adjourn.
Should we second?
Say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We adjourn.